Okay, like to call the Midland County Board of Commissioners meeting Tuesday, April 19th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. to order. And would you call roll, please?
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Twilliger.
Here.
Geisler.
Here.
Dorian.
Here.
Noson. Chairman Bone.
Here.
Six present, one absent.
Commissioner Twilliger, would you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the wonderful season of spring, which we hope will be here soon. During this springtime, we ask you for a fresh beginning in each of our hearts. Please allow each of us to bloom in your word, just as the flowers are blooming. We hope that will happen soon. Help us to be witnesses whenever there is an opportunity and followers of your word every day. Let our petals continuously grow and our leaves steadily extend as we work to gather more seedlings for your harvest. In your precious name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for March 15th and April 12th of 2022. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes.
To his support.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same, we will approve the minutes and move on to the acceptance of the bills.
Properly address general bank claims for the weeks of 3/7 through 3/11, $1,173,340.06. With total general fund expenditures, $56,780.28. General bank claims for the weeks of 3/14 through 3/18, $820,771.62. With total general fund expenditures, $171,616.79. General bank claims for the weeks of 3/21 through 3/25, $3,841,757.33. With total general fund expenditures, $201,976.83. General bank claims for the weeks of 3/28 through 4/1, $356,450.64. With total general fund expenditures, $245,032.26. General bank claims for the weeks of 4/4 through 4/8, $586,828.33. With total general fund expenditure, $72,616.38.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends approval of...
Acceptance of the bills.
Oh, acceptance of the bills.
To his support.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed the same, okay, we will pay the bills. And we're now going to move on to the special program of the day. And that's a presentation of the Midland County Youth Study by Catherine Tate and Pam Singer.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for coming.
This is Catherine Tate from the Legacy Center, and I'm from Midland Kids First. And this year, we partnered together to do the Profile Student Life Survey in our county. We have been doing this survey since 2006. It comes from Search Institute Research out of Minneapolis, Minnesota. It's some of the best research around youth development in the country. And what we've learned since 2006, when we survey our kids every five years, is stunning. We have so, we have data here that no one in the state of Michigan has data like we have, that I can share with you here. And what's unique about what you're going to see today is it includes the time of the pandemic, which we're fortunate, very fortunate, to be able to see not only the growth that we've seen in assets and what kids need in their lives over since 2006, but now we get to see the declines, which aren't very fun to look at. And we get to see the increases in some risk-taking behaviors, which isn't great news. But the data is so important to the leaders in the community, as well as parents and anyone who cares about kids, because it shows us what we can focus on to move forward and to rebound well to help our kids so that suicide ideation goes down, so that depression goes down and resilience goes up. So the data I'm going to share with you today is around this study. We went to every public school, every county school in the county, and measured developmental assets and risk-taking behaviors for kids 6th grade through 12th grade. And that's what we're sharing today. We could not do this without the financial support of key organizations. So the Midland Area Youth Action Council, St. John's Episcopal Church, Midland County ESA, Community Mental Health in Central Michigan, Midland Noon Rotary Needs Committee, and the Midland Kiwanis Foundation, all partnered together to give us the money to do the survey and all. We needed $40,000 to get this done. Also, we could not do this without the partnership from our schools, our superintendents. And when we came to the superintendents and said, "It's time to do the survey again." We're planning to do it in December, they said no. They said they want it in October. They wanted it earlier. Get it to us as early as you can. So this was the first time since 2006 that we were pulled by the superintendents to get in there and get the information to them because they wanted to see it. It has been impactful to them for the last several years, and this is even more impactful. So we surveyed 69% of our population, that's 4,389 students. We looked at demographics like gender and race and ethnicity. And much of those numbers you see on the chart reflect what Midland's gender and ethnicity is. When we look at what kids need to succeed, what they need to be resilient and do well in life, we look at the 40 assets, these 40 things that researchers have identified that make the difference. And we know that when kids are born until they're 6th grade, they are building these assets through these relationships with their parents, through mentors in their lives, activities they're involved in. They're continually building assets, to the point where our 6th graders in Midland County have on average 23.4 assets. That's a little over half. And what the research tells us is if your child, if a child has more than 20 assets, then their risk-taking behaviors go way down. And if they have less than 20 assets, then their risk-takers taking activities are high. Oh, risk-taking activities, I'm talking about drugs, alcohol, sex, violence, theft, these kind of risk-taking behaviors. So as a community, it's important for us to try to move as many kids as we can into that 20 or more asset category, thus reducing risk-taking behaviors in our community and improving thriving for our kids. I show this slide here because this, to me, shares not only how our kids are doing in building developmental assets in each grade level. So we have grade level on the left, and you'll see 2006, 2011, 16, 21. And you'll notice that in each grade level, we grew in assets from 2006 to 2011. We grew in most categories from 2011 to 2016, just a very minor blip in 7th grade. Look what happened in 2021. Now, if you were to ask me during the pandemic, or before I saw this data, what age group was impacted the most with the pandemic? I am an 11th grade student. I would have said an 11th grader. Shoot, he's a junior in high school. He missed all of the sports and the special activities that his brothers and sisters had in 11th grade, and then in 12th grade, and he missed it all. And so I thought, wow, it's 11th and 12th grade. But then I look at the data, and it caused me to pause because I wasn't even thinking about middle school. It's our 6th and 8th graders that took a big hit. And this is why data is so important, because it shows us what's really happening, and it gets rid of our bias, like my bias that I had, and maybe you might have had a bias too. So this, it's important to see how we're moving. This slide shows you the distribution of assets. I just want you to focus on the green chart on the top. So this shows you kids in our community that have over 20 assets. And remember, that's what we want. We want more kids to have more assets. You'll see when we started, the bar on the left is about a little over 30% of our kids had 21 to 30 assets. And then it grew, the following survey, and then the following grew again. And now, in the midst of the pandemic, you see declines in the number of kids that have 20 or more developmental assets. So what is... Catherine will talk about the risk-taking behaviors that correlate with these reductions in assets. But I, these next two slides are my favorite slides because in two pages, it really gives you a great picture of what we've seen in Midland since 2006. So this slide here is external assets, those supports that kids need in their lives, like positive peer influence, like adult role models, other adults in their lives, caring neighborhoods. And you'll see that when we started, you know, every five years, we were making good progress with those green bars you see were growing in assets and the red bars were declining. So that first time we were able to see the change, we were able as, to talk to leaders in the community and refocus how we invested in programming and kids and build more developmental assets. And then you look at 2011 to 2016, and we were doing even better, growing quite a bit in a lot of these external assets. Sure, declines in others, but it's data, it's information for us then to recharge. But then look at what we're seeing from 2016 to 2021. And for me, I gotta take a deep breath and look at all those red bars on the right, going from the bottom up is the assets that we've seen decline the most. And these are external opportunities that our kids just didn't have. They weren't involved in religious communities or maybe extracurricular activities. They didn't have those positive role models in their lives. And that, all of that has an impact on our kids. This is internal assets. So this is the things like cultural competence, resilience, caring, self-esteem, sense of purpose, that kids need. And there is great news on this slide, and there is concerning news. So again, you see the growth from year to year, but in the far right-hand corner, the 2016 to 2020, you see some great news. You see cultural competence, restraint, equality in social justice, caring, all increasing in the midst of a pandemic when everything else was decreasing. And I have to give Midland a lot of credit with the focus on diversity, cultural competence, on caring. And to be able to see growth in these areas in a time like this is huge. And I know this commission, as well as many other organizations in Midland, have been focusing on a lot, on really the equality, social justice, caring, and belonging aspects of our community. So kudos to you. The part now that's concerning are those red bars on the bottom especially. So you look at self-esteem, sense of purpose, positive value of your future, personal power. Those are important assets. And Catherine's going to talk a little bit about the risk-taking behaviors like suicide ideation that's gone up, and depression, and eating disorders that correlate to each one of these. So when I say, you know, Catherine and I saw this data for the first time, we really did have to step back and take a deep breath and say, okay, here we go. You know, we've been wanting to grow, grow, grow these assets. And now with the pandemic and different things that have happened in our community, it's time to respond a little differently and really try to share with our community what's going on and reinvigorate our efforts to really helping our kids rebound well and do better.
Commissioner Twilliger.
I'm going to have a question for you before we go on, and you can answer it at the end if you so desire. But I'd be really interested to know with that, this is like a measurement in time of the pandemic, and the compounding variable is the flood.
Right.
But how we compare with other communities?
Right.
Because this is so valuable.
Right.
It's fascinating.
That was our first phone call was to Search Institute and said, "We want to compare with other communities. We would like the data for, you know, the rest of the world that they measure." And unfortunately, they don't have that to share with us.
It's going to come. It's powerful data.
It is very powerful, and I would love to be able to compare that. But what Search tells us is it's more powerful to compare to ourselves. So what we're doing, comparing each of the five years that we've taken the survey, is the best because it's telling, it's given a baseline where we are in our community, and then, you know, the changes that we see. But I, I'm right there with you. Catherine and I would give our eye teeth for that data. We would love to see it.
Someone will be able to correlate, I think.
Oh, yes, yes.
I really do.
Well, and a couple of things let me add to that really quickly. So we look at our community, and when we look at our data from 2016, and Search Institute did a, an aggregate in 2015 of all of the data they had collected everywhere. When I compared our 2016 data with the 2015 Search Institute aggregate, we were very comparable. So for communities that have surveyed, I suspect that they have very similar results today. And when you look at the risk-taking behaviors that I'm going to talk about in a minute, you, you will recognize some of the trends and themes from articles that we've read nationally. We've looked at mental health concerns, and you'll see that reflected in our community. I think Midland is a little bit ahead of the game on doing the survey and having the data, which is wonderful. And also, it means that we can't do that direct comparison, but we can draw some, we can draw some conclusions.
Yep.
Okay, so here's why we really want to talk about developmental assets. Developmental assets truly do impact the number of risk-taking behaviors that young people engage in. And you can see that by looking at this slide here, where on the left, we've got those who have 0 to 10 assets. On the right, we have those who have 31 to 40 assets. And on the, yeah, on the vertical axis, you can see the number of risk-taking behaviors that kids take on average in each of those, and these are by year as well, so 2006 through 2021. So there's a few interesting things here. First of all, our kids today are taking fewer risks than they were in 2006. So regardless of where we stand today, the good news is that our kids are taking fewer risks. We have some hypotheses about that. But you also can see how strong that correlation is, where we have the kids with the lowest numbers of assets taking the greatest number of risks. If we can move them across that 21, 2021 bar, you can see how low that goes. Since we're talking about unhealthy risks here, we're not talking about healthy risks, like having the courage to stand up in front of a crowd and do a presentation. We're talking about unhealthy risks, and we want to see those numbers go down as far as possible. So one of the things that we've done over the course of this, since 2006, is we've taken a regression analysis, which is just a comparison between each risk-taking behavior and each developmental asset, so that we could assess which assets have the biggest impact. If we're going to invest in something, there's 40 of them, it's overwhelming. If we're going to invest in something, where will we get the biggest bang for our buck? And when we look at many of the risk-taking behaviors, this is the pattern that we see. Positive peer influence, making sure that your kids are hanging out with kids who make good decisions. Positive peers are going to affect school problems, gambling, truancy, violence, antisocial behaviors, and drinking and driving and alcohol behaviors. Resistance skills and restraint, their ability to say no to peer pressure, their personal values that tell them right from wrong, and achievement motivation all have a strong influence on develop, on the, excuse me, on the risk-taking behaviors. Those are all primary. That's the strongest relationship. Every developmental asset will make a difference. Those are the biggest ones, though. And when we look at substance use behaviors, we see that positive peer influence again. It is the most impactful developmental asset against all substance use behaviors. Resistance skills and restraint come in as second and third. So that helps us to figure out where we need to spend our effort. But there's some other stuff happening that is, that has some different patterns. And so we want to spend a little time, oh, I'm sorry, I'm going to spend a little time on substance use first. It is important for us to understand our substance use trends here in the county. We do see alcohol and vaping as the two biggest concerns that we have among our youth. But I also want to point out that marijuana is a close third. And we are seeing some, some trends that concern us a little bit in regard to perception of risk. Perception of risk is one of the things that prevents youth from using substances. And when it comes to perception of risk of marijuana, most students are not perceiving the same level of risk that they do with all other substances. So that's just a concerning trend that we should have on our radar. Overall, though, substance use is down among our youth, and we attribute that largely to the fact that our positive peers have increased even during the pandemic. So I think that's great news. As kids continue to hang out with other positive influences, they're making good decisions. But I want to spend a little bit of time here on mental health, and I know we're pushing up on time here. This reflects how our students are feeling about themselves. I want to point out that depression increased by 10% among students in 6th through 12th grade. Suicide, and that is not an ideation, that is attempts. Suicide attempts among 6th through 12th graders increased by 5%, with 19% of these kids reporting that they have attempted suicide. We have to remember that a suicide attempt for a kid may not look like what an adult, what a legitimate suicide attempt would look like. But we look at it as though they intended to take their lives. 19% of our kids intended to take their lives at some point in time. And our eating disorders have increased by 9% as well. We have a lot of work to do around mental health. And as such, we were concerned in looking at what developmental assets make the biggest impact. And we found a few things. First of all, developmental assets have a huge, huge relationship with mental health concerns. And you can see that when you see that 58% of our kids in the lowest asset category experienced depression. 45% of them have attempted suicide, and I think it's 48% have eating disorders. If we can move them just over one asset category, you see that drop underneath 40%. And if we can get them across 20, it's below 20%. So you can see the need for investment in developmental assets. It's right here in the data. But then we did that regression analysis. And on the regression analysis, we found very different developmental assets that influence mental health behaviors. And this gives me the other two things we really need to spend time investing in in our kids right now. And that's their sense of purpose and their self-esteem. Those three things have the strongest relationship of any developmental asset against any, any risk-taking behavior. We need to spend time helping them find their sense of purpose. We need to spend time building them up and teaching them the skills to rebound from all the things around them that aren't good. Personal power, our community valuing youth showed up as a secondary tier. That's important too, and that's something that this group can talk about. This group can invest in our kids and help them know that they matter and that they have a voice. Family support, safety, and positive peers are the other things that influence mental health concerns in a significant way. So I won't spend a lot of time, Pam talked about this. We saw overall decreases in substance use. We've seen an overall increase in restraint. We've seen positive, continued, that continued presence of positive peers. And we've seen improvements in all of the diversity, equity, and inclusion assets. Those are good things. We have huge concerns. Self-esteem, sense of purpose, positive view of future, personal power, and the related, the relationship to the mental health concerns. We have to address those. We need to look at the empowerment assets, safety, youth as resources, community values, youth and service to others, all went down. And we had some other assets that just dropped in really significant ways that we need to look at and understand how we can help build those back up as a community. Because at the end of the day, every single asset matters cumulatively. They're helping our kids. So we need to invest in them in small ways and big ways. Our recommendations, really refocus on building assets, build relationships with, I don't know what just happened there. Sorry, build relationships with kids, help them find opportunities to serve. Those are all things that are going to feed our kids, really just be intentional in the ways that we're feeding into them, building them up. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Do you, any commissioners have any questions? Commissioner Twilliger.
So we're going to get the, we're going to get the PowerPoint, right?
I can send, what I would like to do is send, I can send this one. I can also reference on our website, you can find the full PowerPoint that lets you look at every single developmental asset, the actual percentages and the change from the past survey. It gives you a little bit more information. This is our shortest presentation. Usually, we have an hour and a half where we can really go deep. But we appreciate the opportunity to get in front of you and share what we're doing.
Commissioner Dorian.
One question. You had 69% participated in the survey. Is there a group? I would assume 12th graders would be harder to pull because of their availability or lack of.
Those demographics are on our website, on the full presentation. We had about 12 to 13% of students in like 11th and 12th grade, and a slightly lower percentage in 6th grade as well, so somewhere in that 13% range. And then for the other grades, it was like 15 to 17%. Overall, it was a fairly even distribution.
Okay, okay. Thank you guys both.
Thank you.
Thanks Pam.
Thanks Catherine.
Okay, at this point, after special program of the day, we are going to move on to public comment on anything that is not on our agenda today or is on our consent agenda. Is there any public comment? Seeing no public comment, we will move on to approving the consent agenda, unless somebody wants to pull an item. I need a motion to approve. So move.
Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed the same, okay, we will approve the consent agenda and move on to standing committee report number one.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to return item number one to committee for further review.
That would need support. Support. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anybody against that? Okay, we are going to not, we're going to return item number one to committee. I know there's people here from the crowd that would probably like to speak, and usually we don't allow this, but you guys are here. So we are going to take public comment on this item and want to explain to you why we're doing this. There's been more information that's come in at the very last minute. We think this is a very important decision, and we need to have all the information from, before acting on it. Doesn't mean we're leaning one way or another with the decision, means we want to study everything before acting on it. So would anybody like to comment on this item today? Yes, please state your name and address, and three minutes is, we allow.
Awesome. Thank you, everybody. Brian Harrison with Advisor Care. My address, my home address is Rockford, Michigan. But we do serve and work in the greater Midland County area with Advisor Care Home Health. Thank you for still allowing public comment this morning. Really appreciate that. Looking forward to consulting more with the committee on the 26th. And would love to know, I guess, I don't know if it's possible before then, after then, or obviously before then or during, some of that additional information that was mentioned, Chairman. We doing this work now again, and we've been speaking under public comment more than once now, but again, believe that auto insurance reform needed to occur. We do believe that there was an overreach by the state enacting a 45% mandated fee reduction for services that were already being regulated by the NCCA, the Catastrophic Claims Association. And even now with the statute enlisting what's known as utilization review, it, that in and of itself compares the outcome services rendered for more than just those injured in auto accidents, but renders services to claimants of any insurance, including Medicare. The, the challenge now is that that 45% reduction places the service reimbursement $4 or $5 below Medicaid. So again, we are seeing $17 an hour reimbursement. So again, we are seeing $17 an hour reimbursement for care that we're paying somebody to go into the home for at $18 an hour. And we've, again, continue to work in good faith with the legislature. We're thankful that utilization review exists because we do, again, believe that there was some fraud that might have occurred, and now we have utilization review in place. That is a system that will support the sustainability of the MCCA trust fund. And again, working to pay for the care for survivors and those that have bought policies with that lifetime unlimited PIP benefit. Still looking forward to continuing in the details. Again, we do believe that there was a good faith effort by the state, but this was simply overlooked in that, again, home health care specifically was never a problem, so it wasn't addressed. But here, we've been caught up, unfortunately, in, again, this 45% reduction, which is, quite frankly, leaving families without care and hope and options. So again, appreciate the few minutes to speak publicly today and looking forward to continuing the conversation in the hopes that the county will, again, support the legislature in amending something for home health so that families can have that right to choose that option should they need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment today? No public comment? We will go on to standing committee report number two, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration and Operations Committee, recommend approval of the agreement with Graphic Sciences for a document scanning project in the Midland County Health Department. We further recommend Waving County Policy 303.1 in regards to bidding for purchases as the county has used Graphic Sciences for several projects in the past and have been satisfied with their services. The cost of this project will be covered by a federal public health emergency preparedness grant, which ends on June 30th, 2022. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of item 24-3-22.
Is there any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Fisher Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number three, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the agreement with Jack Barstow Airport for the provision of rental space for staging and storage of insecticides during the 2022 spring spraying season. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of 27-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Commissioner Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number four, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the agreement with Merritt Cost Services LLC to develop the cost allocation plan for Midland County for the fiscal years ending 2021, 2022, and 2023. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of item number 29-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Commissioner Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number five, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee, recommend approval of the agreement with Wade Trim for the provision of engineering services related to the master plan expansion of the current mosquito control facility. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of item number 30-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Fisher Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number six, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the grant agreement between the County of Midland and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Under the agreement, the county will receive $42,000 in bed reimbursement for Pinecrest Farms. We recommend approval of this agreement and the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of 26-4-22.
And Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Department recommends the adoption of item number 26-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Commissioner Twiliger.
I just wanted to commend the staff at Pinecrest Farms. The health director, Director of Nursing, applied for this and very pleased that she did that because it assists the organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a nice move. Ann Colwell, please.
Fisher Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number seven, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Administration and Operations Committee and the Finance Committee have reviewed the grant award from the Midland Area Community Foundation in the amount of $39,261. The grant funds will be used to support Midland County's mental health court program. We recommend approval of this grant and that the Administrator Controller be authorized to make any necessary budget adjustments as well as sign the agreement electronically. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Eric Dorian, Administration Operations Committee, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends adoption of 28-4-22.
And Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of 28-4-22.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Fisher Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent.
Committee report number eight, please.
Date of April 14th, ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the request to purchase two applications, CrowdStrike and Rapid7, to bolster the county's cybersecurity. We recommend waiving County Policy 303.2 as it pertains to sealed bids to purchase these applications as requested by the IT GIS Director. The cost of these purchases are $33,000 for CrowdStrike and $17,000 for Rapid7. And there is adequate funding available in the IT Sinking Fund. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chair, the Finance Committee recommends the adoption of 21-3-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Fisher Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Noson. Oh, sorry. Chairman Bone.
Yes.
All right, six yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number nine, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, recommend approval of the 2022 State Tax Commission Report of County Equalized Value Form L4024. This report is in accordance with MCL 209.5 and 211.34 and should be submitted to the state prior to May 2nd, 2022. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption item 25-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Mr. Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number 10, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Finance Committee, have reviewed the request to replace the boiler system at the Juvenile Care Center. The estimated cost for this project is $66,633. We recommend approval of the request to waive County Policy 303.1 to expedite completion of this project with a contractor who has already performed this task in several county facilities with success and with a project that performs flawlessly. Adequate funding for this project is available in the General Capital Improvements Fund. Respectfully submitted, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Snyder.
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of item number 31-4-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Commissioner Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number 11, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Human Services Committee, reviewed the request to conduct a classification analysis of the following positions. Director of Nursing at Pinecrest, Business Manager at Pinecrest, Cook at Pinecrest. We recommend approval of the updated job descriptions and scoring completed by Municipal Consulting Services LLC for all three positions. We further recommend that any increase in pay grades be effective on the date of board approval. Respectfully submitted, Eric Dorian, Chairperson, Gabe Twiliger, Steve Blazer, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Human Services Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 10-2-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Fisher Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, one absent, motion carries.
Committee report number 12, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Human Services Committee, recommend approval of the request to appoint an Acting Chief Assistant Prosecutor. The date of this appointment is effective April 11th, 2022. Respectfully submitted, Eric Dorian, Gabe Twiliger, Steve Blazer, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Human Services Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 19-3-22.
Do we have any public comment out there? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Commissioner Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Committee report number 13, please.
Date of April 14th, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we, your Human Services Committee, recommend approval of the request to upgrade the facility's position at the law enforcement center from a janitor maintenance position to a maintenance specialist. Respectfully submitted, Eric Dorian, Chairperson, Gabe Twiliger, Steve Blazer, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mr. Chairman, the Human Services Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 20-3-22.
Is there any public comment on this item? Commissioner, discussion? Ann Colwell, please.
Fisher Snyder.
Yes.
Blazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number fourteen, please.
Date of April fourteenth, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we your human services committee recommend approval of the request to appoint a temporary assistant prosecutor. We further authorize this appointment at either a level one or two dependent on, dependent on experience. Respectfully submitted, Eric Dorian Chairperson, Gaye Twiliger, Steve Glazer, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mister Chairman, the human services committee recommends adoption of agenda item twenty-two dash three dash twenty-two.
Is there any public comment on this item? Is there any commissioner discussion? Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Snyder.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no, motion carries.
Committee report number fifteen, please.
Date of April fourteenth, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, we your human services committee have reviewed the credentials for the incoming community health nurse and the subsequent request to hire the candidate above the starting salary rate. We recommend setting the salary for the incoming community health nurse at a grade nine step four. Respectfully submitted, Eric Dorian Chairperson, Gaye Twiliger, Steve Glazer, Human Services Committee.
Commissioner Dorian.
Mister Chairman, the human services committee recommends adoption of agenda item twenty-three dash three dash twenty-two.
Is there any public comment on this item? Commissioner discussion? Ann call roll, please.
Commissioner Glazer.
Yes.
Williger.
Yes.
Geisler.
Yes.
Dorian.
Yes.
Snyder.
Yes.
Chairman Bone.
Yes.
Six yes, zero no.
Okay, we have no RPCs today. We have no old business today. We do have two items of new business that I would need a motion to take up.
Some of them.
Do sport, one of you?
Word.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same? Ann, will you read item number one, please?
Date of April fourteenth, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, I recommend approval of the attached proclamation declaring April thirtieth, twenty twenty-two as National Therapy Animal Day. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, District Number Seven, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Okay, who would like to make a motion to prove that for Scott?
I shall move.
Okay, thank you.
I need a support.
Support. And then we'll just do a voice vote on this one. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. New business number one is approved and onto new business number two.
Date of April fourteenth, properly addressed. Ladies and gentlemen, I recommend approval of the attached proclamation declaring the month of April, twenty twenty-two as National County Government Month. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, District Number Seven, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Jim, would you like to help out again?
I would like to move to approve.
Thank you. Do we have support? Okay, again, is there any public comment? I should ask for public comment on the last one and I skipped right through that. My apologies. No public comment, no commissioner discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed the same? Okay, that item number two is passed. We are now going to move on to commissioner comments and start with Commissioner Snyder.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Under consent items, did, were we addressing number three?
Number three, no. When we consent agenda, we just did normal business, we just approved it.
Thank you for clarification. I just want to thank Pam and Catherine for coming and the presentation provided. I found it interesting and informational. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Glazer.
Yes, I share the comments. Very informative, particularly the insights about the COVID experience and the impact on the kids. I think we're going to see a generational problem there. And that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Williger.
I would ditto all of those comments and I think that there are, will be additional threads that will branch out into comparing this research with other research. There's profound data that will be being evaluated over the next ten years with regard to the pandemic, but our community is particularly in a very different situation because of the flood on top of that. So I think that it's a sociological study all in itself and I was, I was just talking to Kathy Snyder about that last Friday. So anyway, my thoughts on that, it's fascinating information. Thank you.
Commissioner Geisler.
No comment.
Commissioner Dorian.
Just echo the previous commissioners' comments as well regarding to our presentation today. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I guess the only thing I'd like to say is this resolution that we did not act on today, it's because personally, I feel it's very serious and we have to do all of our homework. We don't take it lightly. We know how many lives have been impacted, but we feel we have to gather all the information to make the correct decision and that's why we're doing that. So I know I said that earlier, but it means a lot to me. I know how important it is and we want to get it right. If we're going to support something, we need to have both sides of the story, so. But we will be doing our due diligence and making sure we make the right decision, what we believe to be the right decision. And then ending, I'd like to say thank you to the Midland Area Community Foundation for one more grant. They sure seem to keep, do a lot of great things for our community and we appreciate it. So we're now going to move on to commissioner meeting schedule and we'll start with Commissioner Snyder.
Thank you. Are we going up until May third?
We are.
We will have a finance committee at one thirty on the twenty-sixth. City of Coleman, I have that evening. Road Commission at nine AM on the twenty-eighth. Township Code Authority meeting the evening of the twenty-eighth at five PM. And that is it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Glazer.
Yes, tomorrow I have a meeting in Lansing with the Substance Use Disorder Oversight Board, Policy Oversight Board at four o'clock. Homer Township at seven o'clock. Next Tuesday, I have community mental health in Mount Pleasant at five o'clock and with the finance committee and then six thirty for the full board. And on Thursday, the twenty-eighth, I had Mid Michigan Community Action Agency in Farwell at four thirty and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Commissioner Williger.
Yes, I have tomorrow on April twentieth, community mental health and that would be the wraparound program and that will, as far as I know, still be a Zoom meeting. And also on April twenty-seventh, Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, we have our quarterly community corrections advisory board and I think that will be in person. This will be our first in person in a long time, but I'm not sure about that. I think that it will come in the invite and that's all I have. Thank you.